Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
This is May 11th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. Welcome to all of you and thank you for being here. I would now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Ms. Terri Salter.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all you have done, are doing, and shall do for us all. As we gather together, we praise you for this day and your purpose for it. You assure us that where two or more are gathered in your name, that you are here. Please guard our thoughts, decisions, and our hearts so that we glorify you in every aspect of our lives. Lord, you are the name above all other names and the king above all other kings. We ask that you be with us all. Please assist us with all decisions. We ask that you take the lead so that whatever decisions that we make, that it glorifies you and work for the good of all residents here in the city of Orange. As the events of the day continue to unfold, we seek your clarity and your peace, blessings and glory, wisdom and thanksgiving, honor, power, and strength be unto you. We believe in your divine presence and ask that all these things through Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated and thank you, Ms. Salter. To item three, motion, motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Motion passes. On to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there is no one who signed up on the citizen comment sheet, but is there anyone who would like to address council? Okay, we got a packed house. That's awesome. So we'll let that go, okay? I will close citizen comments, but before we move on to item five, this is not on our agenda, but I do want to do something. May is known as ALS Awareness Month. It's known as ALS Awareness Month. And many of you know my brother, my friend, Mr. Tony Dallas, who has been fighting ALS for awhile. So normally, we wear the suits and all of that, but today, I wanted to wear my Team Dallas shirt because I want to support my brother and friend, Tony Dallas. Now, something cool that most people don't know about is in 2015, 16, when his son was the quarterback of the team, with his son being on offense, you know, West Orange has always been known to have a good defense. And so, we always wanted to make sure that the other team never scored. So when that other team was coming against the Mustangs, just like ALS is coming against my brother, when he, when we were victorious, he would holler, "Punt Team." Well, about a year and a half ago, Tony gave me a gift that he wanted me to keep and to use. So, as ALS is attacking my brother, I want to hold up the Punt Team. Because my brother, Tony, and everyone else that's fighting ALS, you've got a team behind you. We stand with you. We're praying for you and your family, Leanne. So tell them how much we love them. I know they couldn't be here, but today, I want to recognize your dad and I hope that everyone else continues to support and fight for a cure for ALS. He used to holler out, "Punt Team." There you go. Punt Team. All right. Okay, now, on to item five. Canvas the results of the May 1st, 2021 general election. Appoint a committee of two city council members to canvass the returns of the general election held in the city of Orange, Texas on the first day of May, 2021. Citizen, committee members will canvass returns inside the Orange Public Library and citizens may attend the canvass. So because I was in this election, I have to ask the mayor pro tem to choose two people to go to the library to canvass the election.
Okay, Mrs. Salter and Mrs. McKenna, would you do the honors?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. So they will now go to the Orange Public Library and use all their fingers and toes to count, and they will be back momentarily.
Give me yours, I need it.
So we're going to pause the meeting for just a few minutes. Thank you. All right. All right. So we go from there.
Okay.
So how do you go to the next page?
It doesn't get any water yet.
All right. We will now reconvene the meeting. We will move to item 5B. Consider a resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Orange, Texas on the first day of May, 2021. Read resolution in its entirety. A resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Orange, Texas on the first day of May, 2021. Whereas there was held in the city of Orange, Texas on the first day of May, 2021, a general election at which were submitted to the duly qualified resident electors of said city, the following candidates for city offices, and it was found after being officially canvassed that the votes were cast as follows to it. Results of general election. Mayor-at-large, Charles Thomas, total votes 151. Larry Spears Jr., 1,461. Place one, total votes, David C. Bailey, 145. Patrick A. Pullman, 138. Total ballots cast were 1,614. Whereas a total of 1,614 ballots were cast in said election, and whereas Larry Spears Jr. received a majority of the votes for mayor-at-large and David C. Bailey received a majority of the votes for place one, single-member district one, and whereas said election was duly called and notice thereof given in accordance with law, only duly qualified resident electors of said city voted at said election. The election was held in the manner required by law. Returns of the election have been canvassed by the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, that a majority of the voters elected Larry Spears Jr. as mayor and David C. Bailey as council member for place one. That it appears to the city council that Larry Spears Jr. and David C. Bailey are qualified under the charter of the city of Orange, Texas to hold office and hereby declared to be elected to such office. In the event any provision of this election resolution is inconsistent with provisions of the Texas Election Code pertaining to municipal actions or incomplete, the provisions of the Election Code of the state of Texas shall apply. Passed, approved, and adopted on this, the 11th day of June. All right.
Need a motion?
Okay, so now, we need a motion.
Motion.
I'd be happy to move that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So now, to move on to item six. Conduct ceremonies for newly elected council members. Six, eight, council member place one, single-member district one, certificate of election. Okay, Mr. Bailey, you and your wife, y'all please step forward. All right. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Now, we have Walmart, you know, we have it all. This is a certificate of election and the name and by the authority of the city of Orange, Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on May 1st, 2021, David C. Bailey was duly elected, council member place one, single-member district one. In testimony where I have here and to sign my name and cause the seal of the city of Orange, Texas to be affixed, this, the 11th day of May, 2021. Congratulations. Okay, and now, we have the oath of office by the Honorable Judge Pennington.
All right. Council member, would you please raise your right hand? And I'm going to pause and you're going to say your name. I
David Bailey.
Do solemnly swear, our firm
Do solemnly swear, our firm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of council member place one
Of the office, council, place one.
Of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability
And the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, council member. Two times, two times, two times, right there, right, I mean, right, right there. Just a copy right over here.
Right.
All right. Too late to back out now.
I'm going to back out.
All right.
There we go.
All right. Ooh, that seat is hot.
Okay, now, to the mayor-at-large and the certificate of election will be by the mayor pro tem, Mr. Paul Burge.
All right, certificate of election and the name and by the authority of the city of Orange, Texas, this is to certify that at a general election held on May the 1st, AD 2021, Larry Spears Jr. was duly elected mayor-at-large. In testimony whereof, I have here and to sign my name and cause the seal of the city of Orange, Texas to be affixed, this, the 11th day of May, AD 2021. Congratulations.
I got like half a family here. My grandmother, my great-aunt, my aunt, my sister, my grandma, you know.
Is this your campaign team?
Where's your bat?
Okay, baby. It's his body going. All right. You've been down this road before, so you know the, you know the drill. If you please raise your right hand, and when I say aye, you're going to state your name. Aye?
Aye, Larry Spears Jr.
Do solemnly swear, our firm
Do solemnly swear, our firm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of mayor-at-large
Of the office of mayor-at-large.
Of the state of Texas
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. Sign. That's what, that's what Thomas said. He wants to tell everybody, go home.
Yeah.
All right.
Consider a motion appointing a mayor pro tem.
I'd like to move that Paul Burge should be the mayor pro tem. He's done a great job in the past year.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not used to. Mr. Bailey, aye. Congratulations. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, we, we do, I, we are so thankful that all of you are here. There are several other things on the agenda. I would love for you to all stay, that way y'all can hear the wonderful things that are going, but we did want to let you know, if you didn't want to stay, here's your 30 seconds to leave. Okay, now, y'all are all staying, okay? But before we move on to that, Mr. Bailey, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
No, sir.
Time to go to work, all right. But I do, I did want to say a few, just a few words before we moved on. Sincerely to all of you who are here, thank you. This warms my heart to see a roomful of people that are not just friends, y'all are family. When I spoke about these things during the election, each and every one of you that are here, that I invited, and I invited as many as I could, you all have impacted me and my family over the years in your own special way. And having that relationship with you is what makes this community better, it's what's made me better, and I sincerely thank you all. I want to most importantly thank my wonderful wife for being my greatest support system. She refuses to go to Walmart with me, she refuses to let me go anywhere in Orange, so, but I love you and I thank you. To my son, thank you for being here, he's actually playing college football in northern Arizona. So, he came all the way down from Arizona, so, love you, man, and thank you. And to my grandmother, my aunt, my great-aunt, my cousins, and everyone else, thank you so much for being here, I love y'all. It's a
That's nice.
Now, Mr. Mayor, you know, since you did that, I've got to say a few things.
One more second, one second.
Thinking about why?
Oh, there you go, get that in.
Who's up there? The sheriff, my son is over in the corner, and most of all, I consider it an honor to sit here. So thank y'all.
Thank you. One more thing, and I'll get off my soapbox. Losing my mom and my dad in the same year, man, it was something I never thought would happen. But then, in that moment, is when all of you stepped in, in your own special way. I can never say thank you enough, even to the council members who showed up at my parents' funerals, Terri, all of, Paul, Brad, every one of you, Brad made a cheesecake. I mean, you guys are our family. Even though we don't always get along, everybody in Orange, what I want you to understand in, this is only the beginning. God has blessed each and every one of us with an individual talent that is meant for us to give back to this generation. Your very existence is proof that this generation needs you, and that's why we are here. So when some people look around and, and they say, "Why are you over here, and why are you over there?" It's about unity in this community.
Yes.
When we use the individual gifts that the Lord has put in our lives, the purposes that God has designed for us before we were ever born, that's when we will see Orange continue to grow. That's when we will continue to see jobs and businesses and opportunities that are happening now.
Absolutely.
The things that we are experiencing now are the answered prayers of those who came before us and those who are still praying as we speak. So, on that being said, I thank you, I love you, and now, I'm going to go back to the program, okay? Presentation, Sergeant Jenna Bernard, License Code Enforcement Officer, Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation. Ms. Bernard, would you please stand?
This is a certificate of achievement. This certificate of achievement is presented to Sergeant Jenna Lee Bernard for meeting the requirements to obtain her license as a code enforcement officer from the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation with all the honors, rights, and responsibilities pertaining thereto. Given this, the 11th day of May, 2021. Congratulations.
Okay, on to city announcements. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, council, citizens, just did want to let you know something that's just happened recently, our quiet zones, which were originally installed, I know at least over eight years ago, and at the time, we were very much in compliance with the, with the regulations to have quiet zones, or obviously, they would not have been installed. Recently, there was an inspection of those quiet zones by Union Pacific and the Federal Railroad Association, and we were notified that due to the evolving and stricter regulations, we were not in compliance the way that we needed to be. So therefore, until we get the equipment in, which we just ordered, and, and so, it's going to take, you know, possibly a couple of weeks to get that in and install, that the, the trains will be sounding their horns. We're, you know, yesterday, there was a quiet zone, so, I've heard them already, so just to let you know, soon as we get the equipment get installed, we will again have quiet zones, but for a while, we will enjoy the sound of the trains again.
Okay. All right, thank you for the update. Okay, on to item eleven, I mean, item ten.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, we have some more, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We just have a few updates. This week, May 9th through 15th is International, or National, excuse me, Economic Development sponsored by International Economic Development Council. This week recognizes the professionals that work in economic development, day in and day out, to improve the quality of life and quality of community that we have through new capital investment, new jobs, and new creation of sales tax. As you know, our director here at the city of Orange is Jay Trahan and myself, and then for the county, we have Jessica Hill and Megan Romero, they're here with us today. Jessica and Megan, with the Orange County EDC, have put on, put together a virtual small business summit that will be happening tomor-
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow. And it is for all business owners, all small business owners, or all potential business owners that are interested in that. So if anyone would like more information, please get with Jessica and Megan. The second thing we would like to touch on is the CBB has the DSRA drag boat races on May 22nd and May 23rd. We'll have races from several different states competing down at the boat ramp. We will have a Zadiko concert that evening, and it will be followed by a firework show that was rescheduled from last year's 4th of July. That'll be Saturday evening, the 22nd, following the concert, and that'll be at 9:00 p.m. And then, a special thanks to the Orange County Sheriff's Office for providing the river security, and Westport Marine in Orange as well for the firework site, fireworks site, excuse me. And Mayor, I saved it for last, sorry. Thank you for recognizing me. I see I saved it for last because I couldn't get it up, but thank you.
Thank you, we love you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to item 10, consent agenda. April 13th, 2021, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. And April 27th, 2021, regular Orange City Council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On item 11, final reading. Consider an ordinance amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending on September 30th, 2021, in accordance with the charter of the city of Orange, Texas. The first reading was on April 27th, 2021. Ms. Zito?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the final reading of our semi-annual budget amendments, which was discussed and approved on April 27th. The, the amendments are in your packet on page 27 is the summary, on 28 through 32 is the detail per amendment. As I discussed on April 27th, most of these amendments are to roll forward projects or expenditures that were not completed at year-end, so that's, this is our process to do so, except the Water and Sewer Department, they did have unexpected repairs to make, and we've had to take about $286,000 from reserves for that.
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item 12A, final reading. Consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Bayou Metals Specialties LLC, 1813 Dupont Drive, Orange, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $150,000. The first reading was April 27th, 2021. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, sir. So Mayor and Council, this is the final step in the formal approval process that does require this final reading. Just to recap, it's a proposed $406,000 cap to investment, eight to 10 jobs going in at this particular site, and the specific infrastructure items will be buildings renovation and a new office building remodel, along with a new HVAC system. The EDC incentive is not to exceed $150,000, which will go to those infrastructure items. And after we take this action, we'll be able to move forward with executing the agreement with the project owner. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. Item 12B. Consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Columbanis Motorsports LLC Van Hughes Properties, LLC 3500, IH10 West, Orange, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $250,000. First reading was April 27th, 2021. Mr. Trahan?
Thank you, Mayor. Brief recap, all of us who have driven Interstate 10 west around Tejas Parkway have seen the improvements that are going in, in phase one of that particular project. This is Honda of Orange dealership that will be going in, along with a variety of other products that have been signed on as, as well. The capital investment is 1.4 million. This is a phase one, $250,000 EDC incentive that will go to a variety of infrastructure projects that are taking place at the site. Again, final reading, we can execute this agreement, and then, the investors, Mark Fry with Columbanis Motorsports, as well as Mr. Ed Van Hughes with Van Hughes Properties, will be moving on with phase two at a later date as well. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Trahan? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Mr. Childs and Ms. Henigan. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. Item 12C. Consider a resolution awarding a contract to Texas Materials Group, DBA Gulf Coast, in the amount of $215,651 for the Riverside Pavilion paving and drainage improvements. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. Recently, we took a bid-
Recently, we took, uh, bids on concrete paving and drainage improvement project in and around our brand-new Riverside Pavilion. Uh, we opened eight bids, the bids ranged from two hundred and six thousand up to two hundred and seventy-four thousand, so we had a good spread. Uh, the low bidder, however, failed to submit all of the required documents. Uh, we recommend the second lowest bidder, someone we're very familiar with, Gulf Coast Contracting, formerly APAC, out of Beaumont, in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, so we recommend the award to that contractor.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Wolf? I'd like to say thank you for this, um, for some of the public who may not know, the Riverside Pavilion was recently completed, many of you have, may have attended the Bass Masters, where everyone was able to enjoy concerts, put on by the wonderful Chamber of Commerce and all of their, um, supporters, uh, but this will also allow us to fix the drainage areas and to improve the streets, because this Riverside Pavilion is not just for, um, concerts, this is also for everyday use by you, the public. So it will be open pretty soon to where it will be able to be rented and used by the community, so thank you, Mr. Wolf.
This project, if I may add, mayor, is being funded by monies that were recovered or not utilized as part of the bond program in the street project. We did so well under our three different, uh, street, uh, bid projects, that we underran enough to be able to fund this project, so this was.
That's great.
Kinda like, uh, uh, extra.
A special gift, yeah.
So we wanted to try to use it, uh, to the best ability we could.
That's wonderful.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Item twelve D, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one with Sea Tex Construction Services LLC for the Cove Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation, Mr. Wolf.
Yes, mayor, council, we recently completed the rehabilitation project of our Cove Elevated Water Storage Tank, and this is change order number one and final, uh, it's a reduced, a reduction in the original contract amount by some sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars, and, uh, we're gonna try to use it, we're gonna try to use it in a, a little bit different, uh, way, uh, because this is CDBG partially funded, and, and we don't wanna lose those funds, so we're gonna come back to you with a, a purchase order probably, to spend the rest of this money as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Item thirteen A, consider a motion approving a tax abatement agreement between the city of Orange, Texas and NXO JV LLC, for a period of ten years concerning a new medical center, medical complex at Eagle Point Interstate ten and Highway sixty-two in the city of Orange, Mr. Treyhan.
Yes, so mayor and council, after much discussion and a path that led us to this point, with formal approval processes, including the establishment of a reinvestment zone and structuring this final tax abatement, a new joint venture has been established between Next Core of Denver, uh, as well as Orange Multi-Specialty here locally. It all began with Ms. Geese La Housman donating twenty acres to actually service the lynchpin of this project at Eagle Point, and certainly the vision of Dr. Marty Rutledge, in terms of establishing some type of medical presence here. I would like to acknowledge, we do have Brad Rutledge here with us this morning, so I wanna thank him for being here, not only for the oath of office, but also in support of this project. So this is a final step from a tax abatement perspective, that basically will, uh, create the incentive, final incentive package from a city of Orange perspective, in terms of moving forward, so there will be some further action that will be taken at a later date, but at this point in time, they have what they need at this point from the city of Orange, so, subject to your approval, we can move forward and, uh, formally, um, take the actions necessary to approve this tax abatement agreement as part of their incentive package. I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Treyhan?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Treyhan.
Thank you.
Item thirteen B, consider a motion authorizing use of Orange County Sheriff's Office deputies to supervise county jail inmates who are assisting in city beautification efforts, Mr. Coontz.
Uh, mayor, council, Sheriff Mooney has allowed the inmates to be used again for various projects throughout the, the county, uh, you know, we've done that in the past, been, been several years ago, I believe, but, um, again, we can certainly utilize those, uh, those folks for various projects around the, uh, the city.
Okay, sounds great, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, on to item fourteen, city manager report.
Uh, mayor, y'all might've noticed the, uh, high-water rescue vehicles outside, that's it. Go check 'em out, hopefully you won't have to see 'em this year.
No, hopefully not.[1468.02][1468.05](LAUGHTER). But before we go to that, thank you for saying that, for those who may not understand what those are, in the past, when we've dealt with the issues like Harvey and Emelda, and not just for Orange, but the surrounding areas, it was hard to get to citizens who were trapped, or maybe, you know, in their homes and couldn't get out from the high waters. These vehicles were recently acquired by our fire department and our police department together, Ms. Leanne Brown, uh, Chief Frenzel, and Chief Martin, and so you can see the vehicles out there, and they also have, one of the vehicles has the ADA accessible lift to pick people up who are in wheelchairs, to get them to safety, so, this is, this is your city employees at work managing and doing what's best for you, so thank y'all, we appreciate it. Okay, on to city council report. City council report, starting at my left, Mr. Burge?
Um, yes, I just want to, um, thank the city of Orange for speaking and re-electing our mayor, which is the people's mayor of Orange, so I feel, um, honored to be able to serve under him, and.
Thank you, man.
And I thank all of y'all.
Thank you.
That's it.
Ms. Henigan?
Congratulations, Mayor Spears and councilman, Mr. Bailey. And just a small report, uh, citizen Richard Smith reported some of the newly planted trees at Northway Park are leaning and the roots are coming a little bit out of the ground. I think those were planted by the city, could've been the Lions Club, I don't know, but told him I'd let you know.
Okay. Ms. McKenna?
Thank you all for being here, it's, it's a great delight to see every single one of you, it's just wonderful to have this room full, and with so many smiling faces, and so many people who've done so much for our community. I wanna say congratulations to the mayor. You've done a great job in the past, and it is my honor to sit next to you and serve with you for the next three years. Hopefully I'll be here too.[1588.02][1588.05](LAUGHTER). Y'all come back and vote. And congratulations, Mr. Bailey, we, uh, are honored to have you sit amongst us, it'll be great.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Salter?
I too wanna congratulate, uh, you, Mayor Spears and, and Mr. Bailey, uh, this is wonderful, and I'm in, in agreeance with the mayor, with, uh, Orange is just truly blessed, we just have a, a great community of people, and so I'm just, uh, looking forward for whatever else we have to, uh, to get accomplished and done, and we do this together, so, God bless you all.
Thank you. Mr. Childs?
Congratulate Mr. Spear, or Mayor Spears and council member Bailey. Uh, one quick note, we are all accessible to the public, but don't expect us to see something on Facebook and hope us to act on it. If you will contact us by our phone or email, we will for sure send it straight forward to Mr. Coontz. That's all I've got.
Hey, you wanna sit right here, you can take this and go. Thank you. Lord have mercy, all right, Mr. Bailey?
Oh, no, that's crazy.
Good job.
Honored to sit here, uh, now it's a little bit of learned experience before I speak too loudly.
That's fine. And, uh, I'll close it out by once again saying thank you to each and every one of you for being here, um, today you got to hear just a little bit of what's been going on, um, I'll give you a quick summary, there's a lot of business happening here, not just business, like retail business, there's a lot of things that needed to be addressed that are being fixed. We can't always bring up everything in the meetings, because we don't wanna keep you here till midnight, but just be assured that the two hundred employees that work for the city of Orange are working very hard. I wanna commend all of the council members that are up here, they have worked tirelessly, I get phone calls from all of them, people are always hitting us up. One thing that I do wanna address, that Mr. Childs brought to my attention, which I think was very, 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 um, supportive, in the cleanup that you see taking place in Orange, we have three grapple trucks that are constantly running, Mr. Wolf's department is doing a phenomenal job, Mr. Kelvin's, Kelvin Knoss department alone has torn down eighty-five inhabitable structures in the last few years, so these are some of the things that you, you don't always get to see in the paper, but they are hard at work. But as we start seeing more people bring this stuff to the streets, it's not because we're just being junky, we're, we're cleaning it up, and just like when you disorga, uh, whenever you try to do, what's it called, spring cleaning at your house, for a while it looks messy until you're done, so as we're going through this process, I know that sometimes we see things on the side of the road, but just know that we are working, so thank you,